You swear again, man, Tim.
So we were trying to get him really hammered for the next day.
Yeah. Hey, he's got a good judging mind.
That's funny.
He's our next, he's our next judge in Carroll County, right there.
Fine with me, he's the right age.
You'll be retired by then.
Yeah, exactly. I'll, I'll know when I'm next.
All right, it is eleven oh two. I'll call meeting order. Everyone please rise and listen.
Ladies and to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I jump again? All right, so I'll turn the floor over to you, judges.
Okay.
I know there were some, I'm gonna, okay. I have to hand out, you guys, the best email, but that would be my paper. I should have done this last time. So thanks for giving me an opportunity to do another copy.
Again.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So there are a couple things here. There are two proposals labeled one and two for Superior Court and one and two for Circuit Court. And let's do Superior Court first, because I think this will explain the hybrid of what we're asking for. So as you know, or may know now, in Superior Court, there are three and a half employees. So on the spreadsheet that I gave you, it says Superior Court Proposal One. There are two columns. It'll say old CR's court reporter, and then to the left it'll say new. So that's one employee, and then, so there are four employees listed there, and those are the two columns that match up. So the one, the third one, I will say old PT, part-time court reporter, and that shows their rate of hours, the gross salary, which is the amount in the squares, what was taken from the crew budget, and then some numbers for perth insurance and total cost of goods. So what we've asked first is that that part-time court reporter be made a full-time court reporter. Okay? Our intention initially was to take that employee out of Superior Court and place it in the joint court. Now, that creates an extra layer of difficulty, so we, if approved, what we would do...
One, one second, Judge.
Mm-hmm.
Which, are you a circuit or Superior Court law?
Oh, okay, sorry. That's okay.
There's a reason nothing was...
First, yeah, first page.
Right. So the first request is, you know, make that part-time full-time. And there are the costs associated with that increase. That's request number one. Now, our intent is in the next budget cycle to move that and the employee from Circuit Court, which would be the chief court reporter, which we want to relabel court administrator slash chief court reporter, move that employee to joint court, and this employee to joint court, and likely one of the others. We've got to figure out the logistics of that at the next cycle. So those employees then would be more permanent and universal across both courts, because the, some of the tasks that the court administrator is going to be tasked with are stuff in both courts that makes sense that one person doing instead of two. Claims, payroll, HR stuff, reports to the state, training, scheduling time, covering courts, et cetera. So to have a unified system that's more efficient for both Judge Deener and for, for me. And so I'm gonna go through these one at a time, and then, so what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna note the old pay rate, new pay rate, and so that, that would be just good information for everybody.
But broadly, before, before you go through step by step broadly, how much, how much did you cover?
First, the pay rate. It's the second one.
Second one.
The second rate. Oh, it's one evening.
So you're going from three and a half employees to four, which would be to four full, four full-time,
Correct.
which means the, the twelve to fourteen seventy-five would go to the twenty hour. That's your full-time employee. I got that.
Mm-hmm.
So next budget system, you want to do what? Can you slow down there?
If the next budget cycle, what we'll do is we'll take that person out of the Superior Court budget.
What person?
That newly created full-time person. And we'll put that into the joint court. So eliminate it in one and just shift it over to the other, to the joint court.
Okay, so...
Because that's probably where it belongs, the way we're gonna operate. And so that in the future...
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
These job descriptions say joint court. So that's not gonna happen until next year.
If, well, when we left last time, I was kind of under the impression we couldn't do that. If we can, let's move them now. It's the same to us. We don't care where you park the money, really. We just want to make it as simple and as for everybody.
And I apologize for not being at the last meeting. I think what we're, what we're trying to accomplish is we're taking, we're taking two standalone courts that by all legal reasons are separate. You know, I have no control over Doc, Doc Hawkins, he has no control over me. You know, if we wanted to, each thing could be a standalone. I make my rules, my way is the highway. I hire my employees, you know. That could be how it goes. We're seeing that, given kind of the unpredictable nature of the work that we do, that the demands for the workforce is, it's kind of every day, hour to hour, changes. And so rather than having, just knowing, well, Superior Court's a high-volume court, so they need more employees, rather than having five employees in Superior Court, or four employees all the time there, and three in Circuit Court, and, you know, we just want to make sure that, that we're utilizing the total number of employees as efficiently as possible, so that neither court has a spike where they're just swamped, and neither court has a time where they're just vacant, that the employees, and that's, that's the whole purpose of the joint court budgeting, is that there essentially will be joint court employees. We don't necessarily care where the employees are paid from, and we realize it's a big undertaking to change mid-cycle or mid-year, and so we're not trying to do that. We're just trying to tell you what we're wanting to do, and then try to figure out how to do it as easily as possible from your angle and tomorrow's.
So this first, the first position right here is court reporter, and the second column is deputy court reporter, and the one you're wanting to go to, to full-time is the part-time reporter. Is that correct? Are those the positions?
The...
Let's tell them presently what titles we have and what...
We need to know the positions you're talking about.
Yeah, so...
The first one...
If you look at, this'll help me. So I think, so if you look at the last page of the packet on the appropriation request, it'll have the fund lines and the title of that employee, the current. So where Superior Court has a court reporter and a deputy court reporter, we have filed, or got approved new job descriptions, although I submit them under the joint court, to make everybody who's a court reporter, deputy court reporter, and then the chief court reporter slash court administrator, it right now is lumped in a certain...
But we have to, I, I have to understand where you're wanting to pull those from. So I need you to know the positions that are on this one right here.
They're on the last page. On the appropriations request. It'll tell you the fund number and the title. Those are, those are the employees I have, those are the funds.
But I don't have a fund number and a title on this right here.
Well, that would be court report, so if you look at the title, it says old CR.
Because I'm looking at the pay rate, is how I'm matching it up. So Superior Court's two oh one, Circuit Court is two thirty-two, and joint courts is two twenty-five.
So Tracy, on, well, that column, or on the, on sheet number one, columns one and two.
We actually really need to decide if we're gonna move it all around now, or whether we're gonna, because the, but, doing it at the budget is a whole separate thing. I mean, we need to understand what your plan in the future is.
Right. And that's why we said, if we can accomplish what we're requesting, leaving them in their current accounts and funds, and use those job descriptions. How we change that, if we have to go back to the commissioners, I don't know.
Who can't use these job descriptions to pay out of Superior Court or Circuit Court, the current? That's why I thought at the last time these say joint courts. So if you're, and I thought that's when he said we'd need to move money.
So can...
And we can do that. We would have to do a reduction in Superior Court and the Circuit Court, and then do an additional to the joint courts. Both would have to be advertised. And that's how you do it.
So if we're gonna move, you're gonna have to move it all with the...
And there should be money, because I know at least from the Circuit Court, and I think similarly from Superior Court, we've been short-staffed, so there should be money that has been budgeted that's not been spent, because we haven't had employees for a period of time to then transfer over to the... Doc, good to see you.
Hello.
Thing is, I think the first thing is you're gonna need to adopt these, or...
Well, if we adopt them and don't do the appropriations, then what's your opinion?
Well, but you are going to move, no matter what, I thought I understood, no matter what the salary is, you're going to move those to joint, or they wanted to move them to joint courts, and just transfer what they have left, or whatever, what they care.
I think the desire to move them to joint courts, we think is long-term, correct at best. We're not trying to make it diff, we see that it is difficult for everybody, and we're not trying to, but we understand that that's kind of how it is. So we're, we're trying to transition to the, the new system that we're envisioning, realizing that we're operating under the old system, and that it may not work. But we're just trying to give you all the information, and hopefully together we can come up with a solution, at least short-term, to get us...
So it does have the full-time deputy court reporter as one of the job descriptions, correct?
Correct.
Deputy court reporter, because if you, if you don't, I mean, if they, you want to still move it with the old, these job descriptions aren't gonna get it, but no, the old ones aren't either. So they have to say where they're going at. I mean, the department is joint courts right at the moment, but otherwise they have to stay in Superior Court.
And I see this, this has, I'm not complaining about double working though, but if we need to get to an end result, we are only three months from starting to look at budgets from now again. Do I switch it and then have to re-switch it again?
Because the problem is, we're, we're only three or four months away from starting the budget process, but, but we're eight months away from implementing that budget. So that puts these gentlemen eight months removed from, you know, getting to the point that they want to get to.
Correct, that's what I mean. I mean, I, I would, I would not want to not look at switching to the end result.
The, the timing is not ideal.
I would rather look at it as a whole now.
We can approve these job descriptions and move the old money. I mean, that's not saying that you're going to approve anything else, unlike move the money that's needed for this year.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's what I'm saying. I would like to look at the end result of what you want, instead of wasting time doing something to hold us over and then have to rework it later.
Just for clarification, but...
I, I think we're on the same page, kind of with what both of you said, and I think, I think the, it was kind of a confluence of events, some planned, some unplanned, that allowed this to even happen. I don't think it's going to be a common thing, and I don't think you'll find it to be a common thing across the state to have, if there are only two courts in a county, for them to collaborate as effectively as we are trying to do. And what we're trying to do is make it so that future judges have to still follow the system that we think is gonna be best for the county, regardless of how big someone's ego is, or how important they feel that they are, that the employees are gonna be able to work and service the needs of both courts in a way that the productivity of the employees, the morale of the employees, and the health and wellness of the employees is improved across the board because of just a better use of our limited resources.
So for clarification, but if we can pass the, the motion to approve the job descriptions, and then the money can follow it, even if we don't do a pay raise, or regardless of what incremental hourly rate, you can still move these, and it's not a problem to move from, not from, not from the, from...
Department to department, and yes, you can do that, but it has to be advertised and decided at a different date.
Right.
Okay, so, so...
First thing is to...
Right, so let me, for instance, if, if we pass this today, will there be money to cut the first check? Because of lag time? So how do we, how do we...
I have to advertise it for ten days. I mean, I have to put it in the paper and ask the attorney in there within ten days, the reduction. And then the additional, if you do an additional, a good, well, now you have to do an additional to the joint courts. But you have to do a reduction from both their budgets, which has to be advertised, or the DLK will not recognize it.
We don't have any employees yet anyways, I mean, the, these are, we don't have employees to get paid out of these funds that we're moving yet, so...
Because those two have not been advertised, so there's a lag time on our side anyway, and those two positions would remain unfilled until, so approval. I guess if you guys were to approve the job description, then the question is, can we then advertise them?
That's a part of our...
Commissioners have already been, commissioners already approved them on March first.
Okay.
So yes, once they're done, yes, you can, but you have to have the funds in the joint court.
Before we could ever hire anybody and pay them, right? I understand that.
But that has to be okay, otherwise it's not a...
And you're saying that will be a month from...
They can start the process.
Because we could, yeah, I mean, they start the clock on the, whatever.
Right, but do you want to wait till...
We'd like to advertise the positions. I mean, it sounds like we need to approve the job descriptions.
First step.
You need to decide if you want to move the money, regardless of if you want to spend the money. And then once the money's there, and if the job descriptions are, they've been approved, and then, then we hire someone, then we can pay them out of that joint court's budget. I mean, this is a three or four tier, yeah.
You're fine, yeah. This is the first step, though, is the job descriptions.
Right, so that's, I guess, what we're...
I'll make a motion to pass the two new job descriptions.
To approve?
Exactly.
Yes.
So I have a motion by Tracy Martin to approve, seconded by Paul Ryder. So any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, pose the same sign.
I bear abstain, I didn't do all the discussions.
All right, so we have four, zero, with one extension.
So now the next...
Is that enough, yeah? In a special meeting, is that enough to do anything as far as, I don't know how many members on the floor?
Four.
Yeah, we're fine.
Okay, good.
We're fine, all right.
I'm not questioning, I'm just, I'm just making sure that we know what's happening.
So, well, the next step before they advertise then is the rate of pay.
No, no, right now you need to decide whether you're going to reduce, I mean, how much you're going to, well, I guess you'd want to see if they're gonna do the raise, but if you're not planning on doing the raise, or whatever, you need to know how much you're gonna reduce Superior Court, and how much you're gonna reduce Circuit Court. Do you guys know that?
They're, well, they're budgets. I mean, my bailiff position is vacant now, I mean, so the whole thing could be moved to...
And we have a, a, the court reporter and the part-time, or how much we're gonna reduce, we're gonna have to know that.
I think you're gonna have to do a pay rate next, because before you advertise, you're gonna want pay rate and...
Yeah.
So in the two, so there's Superior Court one, Superior Court two, Circuit one, Circuit two proposals, and that's labeled on the upper left-hand corner. So under the column of say old, you'll see the current rate of pay, and there are two proposals. One is a small raise, and the other one is a slightly larger raise, which gets everybody a little closer to their colleagues in other courts. But it gives you the numbers on either one. If, you know, if you do nothing, it stays the same with you, you know.
So where are we at now, hourly? Where is the moderate rate suggested, and what's the large rate suggested?
So if we stay the same with this...
We did want to point out that a lot of our boys, coincidentally, are not using county insurance, so there are some unplanned cost savings there that we can't guarantee in the future, but exist presently, at least with a couple of our employees.
If we only added, if we let everybody's pay the same, and made the new full-time position seventeen oh four, which is what the, the other deputy court reporter makes now, that would be something short of thirty-three, three increase year-over-year, because I only have the smallest number I kept that was the eighteen, I'm sorry. I don't know what the difference is. I can't do that math in my head, but it's within a thousand dollars of that. Would be thirty-two to thirty-three thousand. If you accept proposal two, the Superior Court total additional year-over-year is thirty-eight, one seven five approximately. Superior Court one proposal, the total additional cost is fifty-three nine, and then for Circuit, it's ninety-six hundred and sixteen four.
So do we know the current, do you know the current hourly rate per position, and how many positions there are versus how many positions there will be in the future, and what their hourly rates are requested?
Yeah, that's on the, on the spreadsheet on the top. So the old rate and the new rate is on there.
Yeah, that's on the spreadsheet.
So they're all, and that's how you come, so if you were to accept proposal one, it'd be fifty-three and sixteen would be sixty-nine, seventy thousand, something.
So I just wanted a clarification. There is no chief court reporter slash, what's the A?
Court administrator.
Court administrator for the Superior Court in your proposal.
Correct.
There's still only one of those.
For both courts. Yep.
Can I ask how you came up with these new rates? I noticed that one is ninety-six cents, one is thirty-four cents. What are you going off of for using rates?
Um, it was everybody who's a deputy court reporter on the same plane, and it's still slightly less than what their colleagues are making in surrounding counties. To go from the eighteen or the twenty. So I don't know how the, in Superior Court, one of my deputy court reporters was making seventeen oh four, and then the other one is seventeen sixty-four. I don't know, just the way it was.
Did they do the same jobs?
They, yes. And so the other thing, well, so confusingly more, but eventually, all the court deputy court reporters, the job descriptions will be the same as that, so they're unified across both courts, and everybody's is the same. And so they'll be doing, everybody will be doing the same thing. In fact, the bailiff, in its current position, the current responsibilities in my court, does court reporter. So they're, you know, crossing the line doing that too, but I don't foresee using that in the same way, especially if we restructure things the way we are, that person will be there to do, you know,
More administrative.
More administrative tasks, right?
So my feeling on that would be they should all be the same, not these, if they're gonna be doing the same work?
I think that, isn't that the proposal for the new?
The proposal for the new one, for the court reporter, you mean the court reporter in the bailiff?
You just said that all the court reporters will be essentially doing the same job, so they should essentially be paid the same.
Yep, and that's the proposal on there. They're all paid the same. So proposal one pays them twenty dollars an hour, proposal two pays them all eighteen. Well, that's the same in both courts.
The new bailiff, it says eighteen on the first page for Superior Court.
Right.
Why how come that's not twenty?
It's a second option for us to look at, instead of giving...
I mean, we'll gladly take twenty, but there's always been a difference in them, and the court reporter, I think is more, the job title is probably misleading somewhat. They're more like a paralegal, I mean, they're preparing orders, they're doing things that, as soon as Judge Deener signs it, somebody's going to jail.
And frankly, some of it, we, we realize money's always tight and always will be tight, and frankly, some of it is my opinion and preference to create a little bit more stratification between the jobs, because they're different jobs, and the problem that we have, in my opinion, is presently, I know they're title-specific, not person-specific, but I've got an employee that's been there for forty years, that's making just marginally more than just a brand-new hire secretary down the hall, and they're, do different jobs, they have different responsibilities, and so I think if we're trying to increase the pay of the people that we're trying to increase, then we also need to realize that the people that we think are doing maybe a less stressful, less time, less important job, however you want to phrase it, they need to make less compared to the more important job. Otherwise, why would anybody want to do the more important job if you could just do the less important job and make ninety-nine percent the same amount?
And I think, too, it gives them an opportunity to come in as an entry level.
Yeah.
And to move up.
A little bit more of a clear job progression, as you made to start off in the...
Like forty or thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. And this is always been my question, because sometimes I'm more new, is how can a person make me that for twenty years, and you hire in a base employee for the same rate? And then I see our problem, as we have it right now, to where we can't get employees to work for eighteen dollars an hour. So if you lower an entry-level job position, you're not gonna get them either.
And, well, I have a question, and it's probably inappropriate, but if you raise them, just even the eighteen, are you going to look at other offices, because they make, every last one of them make either the same, or the bailiffs make the same, and they're saying that's not as important a job than my deputies?
I totally agree that, and I, I brought it to the meeting that we had last time, but I want us to open up this payroll salary, and I want us to really dig into it and find a solution for this about new higher ends and what people are making. And I know you're saying, where's the money gonna come from? Well, you have to find it, you have to work the numbers, and you have to, you have to figure out a way. We are not moving into the future to maintain people, what they can go make, McDonald's and that, it just won't work. So whether that means cutting positions and honking people off, or if it means...
Nobody likes it when I say, I think the key in a lot of departments is fewer employees.
Exactly.
It's sad, but I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather the employees that stick around, get paid what they're worth, than everybody be miserable if we're...
And it's, Judge, you just said you want to move one full, part-time to full-time. That's increasing your staff.
Well, hold on, let me finish, please, because that was my end statement for the judges. So what happens if we do the same to your department? Is if we say, we'd love to give these people more, more money, but you're gonna have to find out to work on one less person.
Then we will, I, I can't speak for him, but we will reduce the business employees available. We are thirty-plus days out on orders, and that has been consistent since I was there with all the other employees. We believe seven employees across two courts will function at a level that's acceptable. I mean, we think that's probably bare minimum, based on the requirements they have to do. You want to put how many more employees over there you want to put, we're gonna operate the court on that number of days. You want to make it four, we'll operate once a month, now the Supreme Court sets Judge Hawkins. You're not operating your court fact, so we're gonna...
We don't, we don't think it's going to go this way, and we've been working with the council, I think, for at least a handful of years, trying to hopefully avoid any sort of financial confrontation, but it's a valid point. Every office, every office believes accurately or inaccurately that they've got the best employees, and they're hardest working, and they need paid more, and I get it. And I also get that there's a point of view that the government is the government, and people aren't here to get rich, they're here to serve the community, and I understand that as well. But there is a logical disconnect between having people that serve the community for a long time, and not rewarding that continued service versus realizing after you've taken everything you can from them for forty years, that we've now have to pay a new employee more than what we did the, the person that gave their heart and soul to the community. I don't, I don't think that's a good way to run a government. But, and I also am in favor of people staying here forever, people that say, oh, people shouldn't be in the courthouse their whole life. I'd rather have somebody that knows what each office does, and can do it well, and are familiar with everything, than try to, every four years, teach a new staff every single job, because the jobs are each important, and they each need to be done correctly, and once the people know how to do them, they can do them well. But if you get new staff in every four years, it, all it takes is one office mismanaging itself a little bit before the whole courthouse is a little bit dysfunctional, and it's tough to get everything working well, because we're all reliant on, to a certain extent, each other's office. And so we, we feel like we do a pretty good job working, at least with the courts and with the agencies that we interact with, trying to be mindful that, you know, we're a county with limited resources, and trying to keep whatever counted individuals we have locally, working locally, and spending their money locally, and...
And I'm not saying, I'm just, I wanted, I wanted you to answer my question, because I wanted people to understand what's gonna happen if we...
The, the realistic, the realistic outcome is, we either find more efficiencies internally, and it somehow works, and it works maybe similarly to what we expected, but maybe not the same core. An alternative may be that a court or both courts are only functioning, meaning only holding court hearings certain days a week, because they need those other days to do the administrative tasks that they can't be doing. I mean, without staff, you know, the judge can only be on the bench or not on the bench. It's a binary function. So if he's on the bench, he can't be then doing the administrative work that he needs to be doing otherwise, and so that's the importance of staff, the importance of staff, but...
And we understand too, that this is a little bit of Henley or Boxer kind of, but we've, you know, we're to the point now where we're desperate, and we have to...
You're down, how many people?
Uh, two, one and one and a half.
I have one employee.
I have, I have, we're down from six and a half to three. Between the two courts.
So the Circuit Court is me and Karen Allen presently, that's the whole, the whole court.
And so morality is...
It's been like that for a few months, yeah, so I mean...
On both sides, so...
And, like, things, things like, Judge, I've got a COVID scare, I can't make it to my hearing next Tuesday, can I, can I continue it? No problem, of course, no problem. Karen now, I see, going to the system, doing an entry, and none of this is hard work, but it takes time, and when it's that type of stuff... and when it's that type of stuff, you know, and the phone's ringing, and you're doing all your normal work, and you're the only employee, and you know, you have a life, and.
It's still work.
You know, it's a lot of stuff, yeah, just because you're clicking a mouse doesn't mean it's not necessarily. And, and to the point as far as, not that it needs to be made, but the courts unfortunately have to deal with a lot of aspects of our society that we protect the general public from. And there's a lot of trauma, there's a lot of things that we'd rather not deal with or see, and frankly, I'm finding the price that I get paid is certainly a good salary, I'm not complaining about what I get paid, I don't know if it's worth it. It is a tough job, emotionally, physically, everything, it's very difficult for the staff. And so, we're acknowledging that they're underpaid, as contrasted to other courts locally, and we're also acknowledging that all of the county employees are somewhat underpaid, and there may not be a solution to that. But if we're going to contrast the court employees to other county employees, I don't think the other county employees are exposed to that level of trauma as consistently that really does negatively affect one's well-being. And so, generally, if you're in that circumstance, you command a higher rate of pay, you're like, yeah, I'll look at traumatized children and dead bodies and things, but you got to pay me two hundred thousand dollars a year to do it.
That's a good point.
Um, so, how many of your employees are paralegal, degree paralegal? But Karen's experience is one of those, for a paralegal degree.
Karen would be the best attorney next to the man in the tri-county area if she could practice.
So, I mean, there's, you know, the longevity, I understand, certainly makes a difference. Um, Karen, yeah, now the, just one has a paralegal degree, so they're doing, I mean, the, the three that we have are incredibly dedicated, and I speak, I know I can speak for you. We're so grateful for them that they have stuck through this.
And, and, like, like most enterprises, there are glory days and salad days, and we've heard of times when everybody in the, I mean, kind of what we see at the holiday dinners. The holiday dinners used to be, I think, more festive, enjoyable, people having a good time, and it still is kind of that, but it's pretty much all offices come down, and they sit there on the little office table, and they talk to the people in their office, and the courthouse is just a bunch of different offices. I think it maybe used to be a little bit more of a family, and kind of on the third floor, we're in it together, whether we want to be or not, and so we're all kind of pulling together and trying to bring some of the joy back to the work, because it's not the pay that brings us here, it's kind of the lifestyle and the, the other advantages that the job can provide us. And so, we're trying to, we're trying to, as best we can, address the morale issues, the well-being issues, the, the physical and mental well-being of the employees, and I don't think that will ever be, it likely won't possibly be served by having the courts wholly separate, and that's nothing y'all can control, that's just something we can control. And so, we're trying to force our county into being a county that is a model county for other counties as far as how a court system can efficiently, effectively work, given limited resources. Because frankly, some of our surrounding counties have a lot more resources than we have. They've got, you know, wind farms, solar farms, just landfills, things of that nature, that we don't have those revenue streams. And so, we realize we're never going to be able to pay what White or Tipton County pays, and we're not asking to. We're just trying to be a little bit closer from the bottom by percent of the state to somewhere more reasonable.
I, I'd like to make the motion that we go.
There's several things in there, I, you need to decide, well, I'm not telling you what to make, but they're, they're proposals by number, so you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion that the new deputy court reporter.
Oh, this is Superior.
Yeah, in, in the Superior Court, I'd like to make the motion that the new deputy court reporter rate per hour goes to twenty dollars, and that the new deputy court reporter and, and the second person in Superior Court go to twenty dollars, and that the third person in the Superior Court goes to twenty dollars. And I'd like to add the new bailiff rate to be eighteen dollars per hour in Superior Court. And now I need to, this should, uh, yeah. What's that?
Do one at a time, so you're, you're.
He's, everything he said was proposal one.
Proposal one.
And then would that be proposal one for the Circuit Court as well?
Yeah.
I'm just doing some quick math of the same here.
I think Judge Huxton, I meant to say at the very beginning, I mean, that would be, because we realize it's not easy to do.
Especially taking time out of your, your schedules. Yeah, somebody just wanted. Well, there was no second to the motion.
So that's Circuit Court proposal one and Superior Court, okay.
Is there a second to the motion?
You have, you have jobs posted currently, right?
That the posting is expired.
Okay.
So we haven't done anything, we wait to see what happens?
We recently have posted, so I have recently posted my court reporter position. And bailiff position? I have recently posted both of my positions, the local posting the way that they normally do. Judge Hawkins has recently listed how many positions?
Bailiff and both deputy court reporter and court reporter as their current titles.
So we've had, we've had four or five open, we've had five positions we've posted and expire. We had, I think, one applicant, she applied for multiple positions, but I think it was one person, that's the only application I saw.
The bailiff position, I have one applicant who, as I mentioned last time, I offered the job to, was overqualified, bachelor's degree, and then declined based on the salary and the benefit package effort, we reviewed that, financial couldn't, eco next up. So, we've had a little, yeah, we've had a couple that come in late, the one, I think there were two.
I mean, so I've had one applicant, you've had one applicant that you extended an offer to that was in decline because of the financial package, so that's, that's where we've been. These, these positions have been posted, at least, and granted, we need to get them on Indeed.com, we need to try to figure out how to get them out to the world a little bit larger.
That's my follow-up question. Where are we posting these? We constantly hear, we don't have applicants, and it's because we don't pay enough. But then, I just heard at our last council meeting, well, we put it on Facebook, and we put it on the corporate.
I think there's, I, I think that there might, it appears to me there's been a breakdown as far as maybe the, which entity's role it is to actually physically post it. And so, we know it's been posted, we know it's been posted there, unfortunately, I think it's only been posted there. I think it, it, in my opinion, and I might need to learn how to post things on Indeed or some other place, because I think it does need to be at least someplace where if someone in, any place in Indiana that looks for Indiana jobs, it could come up.
Yeah, some of these websites cost, and I see it more cost-effective if our HR person, possibly.
It is up to each department to post their own jobs.
I know it's, I know, let me finish.
We, okay, go ahead.
An HR person, in my respect, is that even though each department does their own job listing and, and what they want, it could go to the HR, and then we pay one fee to the websites who do charge, instead of each department having to pay their own fee to list.
And I, just in my brief time in this capacity, it does seem like the county is making inroads in those cost-saving opportunities, where instead of having each office handle something on its own, we're pooling resources, I mean, we've got a shredder, that we've got three or four offices that pool it together for, and it's, you know, cheaper for us that way, and it's common sense stuff, but it's, when you're working, unfortunately, in the government, it's not always that easy, because sometimes there's a, a reason why you can't use other budgets, or, you know, there's always, it's never a good reason, but there is a reason, and we can all try to follow the rules. I mean, the government never makes things logical.
And who's to say if Facebook doesn't work? But if you don't get anybody coming in, then you need to look at other options and say, this isn't working. So maybe then you turn to.
Yeah.
A conglomerate of, of posting, and you pay one fee for the Carroll County government to post. But then it comes to the, of who pays for it, out of which department?
Right.
And you know, whatever.
It's not just one fee, though, I mean, it's one fee for each, what I've learned when I did the highway. You have to do it so many days, and they charge you on how many. There's two different areas that we did for the highway, we did it in Indeed, and we did it career builder. That was because commissioners asked me to, to do it that way, out of their budget. When somebody has job descriptions like this, they are posted on our website, not just, I don't put them on Facebook, I'm not going to put them on Facebook. But we do put them on our website, and they are required to post it in our office and down at the, um, the elevator, or we have a stand down there, and they're supposed to post them for fourteen days. If they want to do more than that, then that's fine, and that's up to them. I mean, you know, they could, they could send something to the comment, put it in there. But we do not do that, because that's not what we have been told to do. But we do put it on the website.
I think you bring up a good point, if we handled this, or if we just looked at this as an HR expense across the board, and then budgeted appropriately, and commissioned a budget for advertising jobs.
I mean, we are not in the day and age where people are going to walk in those doors down there and find a job here. It's just not going to happen.
I, I think it's a tricky thing, if we, if we zoom out one degree, we don't necessarily want people coming to Delphi or Flora or Monticello just because they're going to get paid eighteen dollars at the whatever office in the government building. But if it's a rate of pay that they can operate their household budget on, and they want to, you know, have a community and lifestyle here and commit themselves to the community, then sure, come, you know, take a job, work here, great. But I don't think, I think it's more about fairly compensating our community members that are working here for the services they do, as opposed to trying to bring in top talent. We're not going to get top talent from across the state Carroll County government positions, unless we're paying fifty dollars an hour, I mean, we're not, we're not going to be able to afford it. And so, what we're doing is we're getting people that already live in the community, you know, maybe they're a second income for their household, but they, doesn't mean that they shouldn't be paid what their services are worth.
My concern for bringing it up was not that we have a conversation around HR, how we're posting jobs. My concern is, as a council, we constantly hear that we need to throw more money at it, and that's the fix. And I wanted to bring up the idea that there are other factors that come into finding the right candidate and filling positions effectively. It's not just we have to pay more. Certainly, that's a component of it, but if we're not posting it efficiently, or, or in a manner that is going to broadcast our need, that's one thing to consider as well.
I, I a hundred percent agree, and frankly, the courts have been historically spoiled because there hasn't been that high of turnover, and the positions have typically been able to be filled by either someone that's already in the courthouse that knows how the courts work, or, you know, a friend or family member, someone that knows someone that's got the skills to do the job, and they find out about the job through word of mouth. And so, we've been fortunate to exist that way, but now our, our needs are so dire for employees that, you know, friends of friends were out of them, we don't have friends of friends anymore, you know, they've all moved on. So, so we do need employees, and we need qualified employees, and, and you're exactly right. It's not just a price thing, it's about people knowing that there are jobs available, and what the responsibilities are, whether they're qualified or not for them, but you know, I don't.
And that was my comment before, is that you, I mean, is this thirty-six cents going to get you more employees?
Thirty-six cents, oh, you mean for.
Yeah, one's thirty-six, one ninety-six.
Well, okay, well, just as a point of order here, we have a motion, and either it needs to be seconded or die for like a second.
I thought you said that.
No, no, I didn't officially.
It seems, it seems like it's moving that way, but we appreciate the motion, Mr. Ryan.
All right, so I will, the motion fails for like a second. Any other want a discussion for that?
Yeah, that, that discussion didn't happen to the motion, apparently.
Sorry, uh, so, is there anybody else that would like to take action on?
I'll make a motion that we, that we rate, that we raise or rate to nineteen dollars.